Managers for the Columbia Public Library, which is part of the Daniel Boone Regional Library System. Thanks for being here for today's Lunch and Learn with Columbia Public Schools Board Members, David Seaman and Suzette Waters. And this Lunch and Learn series is co-hosted by the Library and the League of Women Voters of Columbia Boone County. Before I turn things over to the League to introduce our speakers, I just have a couple of Zoom housekeeping items. To ask questions today, we'll ask that you use the chat feature of Zoom. I think we're all pretty familiar with that. Just if you hover over your Zoom window, you should see that chat icon, that little speech bubble and other tools. Just click on that and type in your question. We are recording this presentation, so it will be available in the next day or two on both the League's YouTube channel and the Library's YouTube channel for future viewing. And now I'd like to welcome our moderator, League of Women Voters of Columbia Boone County President Barbara Hoppe. Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you, Lauren, and thank you as always to the Daniel Boone Regional Library for hosting and co-sponsoring this Lunch and Learn programs. Today, I'm delighted to welcome David Seaman, President of Columbia Public School Board, and Suzette Waters, newly elected Board Member in April, to chat with us informally and unofficially, sharing some of their thoughts and plans and goals and ideas for the coming school year. I will also have, I also have some questions for them later that were, that came up by the, or given to me by the school board mem, or not the school board, but League of Women Voter Members. And then we will take also chat questions from the viewers as much as we have time for. So with that, I'd like to start off with each of you telling us a little bit about yourselves and what are your, what your top goals and plans are for the coming year and anything else really that you would like to share with us. So I don't know who wants to go first, but Suzette?
Sure, I'll go first. Thanks for having us. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be on the board. I was thrilled to be elected and I take this role really seriously. I, my goal, I would say, is to just interact with parents and families and the community as much as possible and bring what is important to the community and to our schools back to the administration. I kind of see the role of a board member as being like a mediator maybe between the community and the administration. And I, that's what I hope to bring is a sense of partnership. I had office hours this morning. I'll be at one of my schools, Oakland, at 1:30 today. And so that's kind of my, that's kind of the lane I'm comfortable in is, is operating in the community. And I think I would like to bring a spirit of positivity to the board. And I, we have a wonderful board that, it is a thankless job, it's a demanding job. And I would like to just keep communication flowing between all the interested parties. And I know we have very many interested parties in our community and that is, that is a bit, we, a bit of energy that I would like to channel and move into a positive way.
Great. And David?
Yeah, thanks for, for having us. My name's David Seaman, current president of the board. Been on the board since, till, since June of 2020. So this is my third year. Been a Columbia resident since 2003, Rockbridge graduate, Columbia College graduate. Like Suzette has said, I've enjoyed my time on the board and its service. I think my, my greatest goals for this year is completing our comprehensive school improvement plan, which I believe is actually due to the state December. So I don't have much time to complete a plan that's going to help CPS navigate the future for the next five years. So that is, that's my major goal. So make sure that, that is, we set it up for the, we set CPS up for success for the next five years. Thanks, Dennis.
Thank you. I just, a follow-up question on that. Can you tell us a little bit more about the, what's in the comprehensive school improvement plan or what it covers?
Yeah, so it's, it's going to cover just about every aspect of CPS, everything from our finances and budgets to curriculum, construction projects, new schools that will be completed. It is the source, it is essentially the source document for what CPS will be attempting to achieve over the next five years. The current one expires this year. And I expect that we will definitely see some, some new items in there, but it'll, it'll essentially be a continuation of what we have seen in the past. Administration is working on the overall procedures for that plan and they'll bring it forth for the board. We'll have a certain amount of input as well. And then we will, we'll bring it forth to the public. We'll have conversations about it. Folks will get to read it, have the opportunity to comment on it. We will submit it to the state.
Great. And what's, so what's the timeline on that?
So we've, the administration has already started working on it. They've been working on it for the last few months. The deadline to provide it to the state isn't December. So the state Missouri directs us to say, hey, we want your CSEP by December. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head the exact date. So the next couple of months, they're going to start to hear that word CSEP a lot more. See more presentations on it, board meetings and at work sessions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
If I could interrupt, David, is that, cut me if I'm wrong, but I think that's what the subject of the World Cafe on October 6th is going to be about. So there's going to be an event at Stony Creek Inn on October 6th from 6 to 8, if I'm remembering right. And we're going to be talking about the continuous school improvement plan or the CSEP at that. So that'll be a time that community members can learn about it, offer input.
That was a great plug, Suzette.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
And the whole board will be there. Well, the whole board is, is invited and.
So that's coming up pretty, pretty soon, in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for adding that. Couple, we'll, we'll go into a couple of questions that the League of Women Voters Board has and then we'll start taking questions from chat. I was just going to check to see, yeah, there's a few questions, I think, in there already. So we'll go on to some questions. The first one is, what do each of you enjoy most about being on the school board? And what are you most excited about? And conversely, what is your least favorite thing? And what is the most difficult or problematic thing being on the school board? So who wants to take that?
I'll go first. Well, David, thanks. Because my favorite thing hands down is being in the schools and going to their school functions. I went to a PTA meeting at Mill Creek on Tuesday because they're one of my assigned schools. I've been to executive committee at Battle. Going to, like being in those spaces where students are, is definitely the most rewarding and interacting with families that way. And then having community office hours, I've actually enjoyed that. I was afraid today, maybe I was going to get yelled at. Nobody yelled at me. It was a very, you know, it was a very positive space. I was able to have good conversations with some people and talk about some good ideas. I would say my least favorite part right now is trudging through the agenda attachment for the board meetings, because there are hundreds of them and it's kind of a slog. So that, there's a tie between that and finance committee. I, there's a, there's a lot of numbers that we get, you know, hit with and the, the way they're presented is not exactly the same as the way those numbers have been presented before. So you're not really comparing apples to apples when you're looking at different spreadsheets and different presentations. So I'm still trying to wrap my brain around that. And, you know, I'm, I do bookkeeping for one of our companies and I'm, you know, I've got a college degree. It's, but it's, it's, that's not the, that's not the world I operate in. So if someone else wanted to take my place on the finance committee, I would not, I would not arm wrestle them for it. I'll say that.
Thank you. And David, can you share some things with us?
My, my most enjoyable aspect of board service is graduation. There's, there are a number of, number of paths there where we can see the impacts that we're having. But when you get to stand up during a stage and they call that student's name and they walk up towards you, my favorite part is looking into their eyes and seeing, are you excited? Are you sad that you're leaving? Just not cared? Do you feel like it's because mom wants to take pictures? It's, it's great to see that joy on their face, their parents and their family in the background supporting them. Standing in that degree and know that we've had an impact on ensuring that they have arrived at this point is great. I've, I've always said that this is the one job I've ever had in my life where I wake up every morning after like, there's a, there's a sense of purpose there. Like I know I'm doing something for some. The part that I probably, that I like the least, probably the amount of time it takes away from everything else in our lives, right? It was like, you signed up for this, you know, you signed up to spend these hours and we did. But you're talking about spending additional 12 to 15 hours a week outside of your full-time job, outside of, which we don't, family or anything else. That's difficult to do, but I think that's, that's part of any job. That's part of my own full-time job, right? I prefer to be at home with my kids than be at work. So that's my least favorite part, but it's, it's part of, it's part of getting to that purpose, right?
Okay, thanks. Thanks for sharing that. It's nice to get some personal perspectives from you. A question from the League of Women Voters Board is, how do you see the Columbia Public School System contributing to the accomplishment of the Climate Action Plan and climate goals? Building design, energy efficiency, transportation? What role can the school board play in this important goal for the community? And what can the community do to influence that?
So I can, I can start here, Suzette. I can answer a little bit of this. So we do know that, you know, climate change is, vast majority of climate change is directly caused by construction of new buildings and then operating those buildings, at least within cities. So as we continue to construct new schools, which we will be soon, and new elementary school, it's a great chance that at some point around 2028, we'll be constructing a fifth high school in town, making sure that we are doing so with processes that are sustainable that ensure that we're not putting a further burden on the climate and making sure that the buildings that we are constructing are not only going to ensure that our students are able to receive a proper education and our staff are able to do their jobs, but like you said, are also climate friendly, that they are utilizing lighting and HVAC systems, but aren't putting that further pollution out to the air. So I think Randy Gooch just gave us our, our chief, oh my gosh, I'm blanking on Randy's title now.
Operations officer.
Oh, so yeah, he wanted to help him, structure an officer. But our chief operations officer just gave us a, a great presentation on the different styles of building processes that they're exploring and changing and, and how those can be more efficient for construction process. So the public does have an opportunity to, to voice their opinions on those things. I'm hoping that they will.
And did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, Suzette?
A little bit. I know that, you know, new construction is one thing where, one area where we can make sustainable choices. I will mention that a lot of that depends on budget also. I mean, we have, we have the constraints of a bond issue in which we are able to operate without going to the voters for more money. And so, you know, there are sustainable building practices that may be out of our reach because, because of budget. You know, we might not be able to do like, you know, geothermal, geothermal heating because it's too expensive. But the other side of the, of our facilities is that we have already millions of square feet of building space and we have to, or hundreds of thousands of square feet of building space that we have to maintain. And some of our buildings are very old. So as we replace systems in those buildings, as we work on lighting, you know, those are other opportunities for us to, to decrease our carbon footprint. And I see the, the chat, you know, somebody said solar panels. So I actually have a neighbor who is, who used to write an energy column in the Tribune and is, I mean, that's what he does is water and solar things. And I've talked to him about solar panels at the school and, and I've also talked with Mr. Gooch about solar panels. And we can do, so solar panels are not a fix for an inefficient building. Solar panels is, is like the frosting on the cake. Well, if your cake is made of dog food and you put frosting on it, you still don't, you know, that's not helping anything. So all that to say, you know, I'm on the long-range facilities and planning committee. Those conversations will be had and those goals are important. And I think it is on everyone's radar to try to build sustainably and make, make choices that are going to be good for the environment, best for our students and good stewards of our tax dollars.
Thank you, Suzette. A follow-up question to that. We understand or think that the new school building has no goals towards energy use in its architectural plan. Can you tell us a little bit about that and what do you know? Does it have energy goals and what are they or not?
I'll take this one. I asked Mr. Gooch about this and that building hasn't been designed yet. So I don't know how anyone would know if it, what kind of goals it has or doesn't have, with the design meeting doesn't happen until next month. So David, do you have any, do you, do you know anything? Yeah, I, it hasn't been designed yet. So.
Okay. Well, that was one question that a, a member had, so that's good to know. And it's not too late for people to weigh in or pay attention or, or for you to weigh in.
Right.
Thank you. Let me, let's see. There was another building-related question I'll ask from the board. With COVID, we are learning that air filtration systems are important. What air filtration systems will be incorporated into new structures or put into renovating the old buildings? Do you know anything about that?
No. That is, that is a facilities-level question. The only, that's, that's not something that the board weighs in on. That's an operational matter. And that would be, that would be a great question for the facilities manager. And I don't know.
Okay. And want to say anything additional or add anything to that?
No, I think, I think that's a, a great segue into and hold on to the conversation about the roles of the board and the role of administration. We are not involved in determining the exact specifications of each HVAC system. Those will come before us once those are officially put out, once someone, once we have votes. But yeah, that's, that's not where the board's, where the board's responsibility is mine.
That's a good lead in to another question that the board had, which was, could you tell us a little bit about what are the school board's responsibilities and what you do have an influence over and what you don't have influence or input into? Just generally and maybe some specifically?
Yeah. So I mean, overall, by the organizational chart, we have been full and so we're technically everything within the district. But as, as a volunteer board that is not there to conduct the day-to-day operations, what we've done is we've hired a superintendent who was also then appointed and hired a cabinet, who didn't filter out, do those types of things. So for instance, Devin Moore is our secondary assistant superintendent for secondary, for elementary education. Once he's identified an issue, it's typically that Mr. Moore is going to work with his staff to solve that issue in conjunction with Dr. Irwood. And Dr. Irwood is going to bring it to our attention so that we are aware of this as well. What you have to remember is the board is a policy setting. We are the governing body. We are a policy-setting body for the district. So I use this example a lot. We say, Dr. Irwood, they're number one, number two, and number three pencils out in the district. We want there to only, we're setting a policy that we only want number two pencils to be used. The board then does not say, well, you got to buy it from this manufacturer and you have to have this specification on these pencils. We tell them, go find the pencils. And then that is when the process starts for administration to take over. So even when I ran and like, we had this conversation earlier, when we run for board office, there's always this misunderstanding even amongst the candidates and for probably the first year and a half amongst board members. What is my, what's my specific job? What am I supposed to be doing? And it does take a while for us to figure that out. It takes, there's this steep learning curve.
Thank you. And Suzette Waters, do you want to add to that?
I think David covered it pretty well. I mean, I, I'm still learning kind of how to swim in these waters. I think I'll leave it there for now.
Thank you. Okay. A couple more specific questions and then we'll go to the chat questions. Now, this one's more specific. How is the school system addressing civic education and the importance of voting and knowing how to get good information and to vote and how to sift through and identify misinformation so that they become voters and responsible voters? That is so crucial to their life and to our democratic form of government.
I don't mind taking this one and then David could hop in. So that is part of the curriculum. There's a ninth grade civics. Every, every ninth grader takes civics and they go over all of that. There is media center curriculum in evaluating source material for authenticity, for reliability, that is rolled out in different ways throughout different grades. And then before ninth grade, there is some, there are ways that they talk about civic engagement. You know, when they're talking about the state, when they do the state of Missouri curriculum and, and branches of government, things like that. They, they really drill down on it in ninth grade. And then in high school, there is also offered, you know, AP government courses. So I know that as a parent, I don't know that as a board member because we're not really involved in directing curriculum or deciding on curriculum. But I know as a parent that, that those things are taught because my, my kids have been taught them.
Hey, Mr. Seaman?
Yeah. I think Suzette covered it well. The only thing I'll say is the role of the district is to supervise you with the critical thinking skills necessary to, to go out and like you said, and sift through all of the different ideas that you're exposed to. We are here as a public school district to ensure, not, not to ensure that our students are leaning one way or the other or to try to convince them of a certain mold of ideology. We want to put it all out there in front of you, give you the skills to determine what you think is correct and then let you go on your own path. That's, so I think, like I said, I think Suzette covered it very well.
Thanks. And a follow-up sort of question related, but broader question. How are classroom teachers involved in curriculum decisions?
I'm not really sure what, I know the curriculum is based on the state standards. Now textbooks are chosen by a long process involving teachers and department chairs and community members. But individual curriculum, like how that's done, again, that's like, that's outside, outside the board umbrella. We don't, we sign contracts for curriculum, like with companies for the curriculum, but we don't choose it. So sorry, I don't know more. You need to have a teacher on here too.
Next time, right. And Mr. Seaman, do you, can you want to add anything to that or?
No, I would, I would suggest for the curriculum staff of questions, have you all had Dr. Irwood or any of the assistant superintendents on?
Last year we did and he wasn't available for this, this session. So we'll, we'll follow up with him and we can also just ask that question and, and share it with our members. So we'll do that. And it's perfectly fine. And we appreciate you saying, I'm not sure. I don't know that. We don't expect you to know all the answers.
Yeah, we're involved at a very high level on that issue to, to get into the weeds that you would want one of those subject matter experts there. Like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to steer anybody wrong with, like, answering questions.
Okay. And one quick sort of related question, and you may or may not know this, is what current academic test does CPS use to evaluate learning?
So the state utilizes math testing. We actually just had a great conversation about that the other day as well. How math testing is not something that's, it doesn't, the score that a student receives does not impact their overall grade. So we do have some issues with students not taking it very seriously. There are other assessments that take place, but that, that's the state of Missouri focuses on the math test. Students will take the ACT, some of them will take the SAT every so often. What's their sophomores, seniors, sophomore, juniors, and seniors in high school? But state of Mississippi is focused on math test.
Thank you. Suzette Waters, do you have any?
We also do internal assessments. We've moved to using iReady throughout the district to do our internal assessments at each grade level and those track the actual student from, you know, beginning of the year. There's going to be three main assessments this year, I'm told, beginning, middle, and closer to the end of the year, just to track individual student achievement instead of getting an aggregate score about what you knew last year sometime this year. I mean, that just doesn't inform teaching. So we'll, we'll use iReady. But then beyond that, I don't, you know, individual classroom teachers or, you know, might use other assessments. And again, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a question for somebody in the administration.
Thanks. I have one more question from the board and then we'll go and move to the chat questions for the last half of our hour. So this last question is, what steps has CPS taken to ensure the physical safety of children and staff? Especially, you know, in light of other school attacks throughout the nation?
I can take this into that. So for the last, I mean, not even for the last few years, but by the last two decades, really right after Columbine, CPS has taken steps to add everything from severe vestibles. When you walk up to a, most of our buildings now, you have to push the button of the buzzer. Someone in the office has an opportunity to see you before you enter the building. I know at some places like Hickman and at Rockbridge, definitely, as I've been in those buildings a few times, they have a secondary opportunity to get a full look at you before you can even enter school, enter the school any further. There are, I'm trying to be very careful about what I'm sharing because we are also in a sense running a counterintelligence program against folks who do want to cause harm to our schools, our students. And we don't want a lot of that information shared. I will tell you that about, I believe it was two months ago, I was at John Warner Middle School, CPD conducted a high-tech shooter trip. I was able to stand in the hallway with principal, member of CPD as they conducted their response times and they. It's, it's different to think about these things as they happen in another state or another city. It's another thing to stand in a building and imagine as there's smoke going off and the alarms are going off rounds are being fired, that there could be 500 students running around. And as a parent of CPS students, to then look and say, that one could have gone, that, that kid could be mine. Say our district security has been, they're taking it. Say our district security has been, they're taking it incredibly seriously. They review all the after action reports from every school shooting, unfortunately, that takes place in the country. And they continue to learn. They continue to adjust to what we're seeing during these events because they, they unfortunately have evolved and become more deadly and unfortunately much more efficient at what they're trying to accomplish. So. Yeah, I would, I would ask that even if, when you walk into a school with your child or you're outside of a school, you see something that you think is out of the ordinary. If you see a door that might unfortunately be popped open because somebody kept it open for convenience. Please say something, say something to someone at that school so they can route that to district security. Our students' safety is number one priority. We can't educate students if these things are taking place. But yeah, our, our security team is, is on top of their game. They take it very serious.
Thank you. And Suzette Waters, do you want to add anything or say anything more?
He covered it.
Okay, so let's go, we'll go now to the chat questions. I think we have quite a few. I'll try to go to the beginning ones first. I don't want to spend too much time on it because you probably have addressed this, but one is regarding limiting public comment. It says at the school board meeting this last week, you know, changing that policy or adjusting that policy. Why did both of you as public servants go against what the public wanted in terms of the testimony and vote the way you did?
Can we go first, Suzette, or would you like to go first? So public comment policy was changed. Before this change, we had two separate types. We had action item votes, action item comment, which is essentially comment on any, any agenda item that the board is going to vote on. At the end of our meeting, then we had an unlimited portion of, of general public comment. During both instances, a member of the public could come speak to the board for the three minutes, depending on whether it was general comment or action items. What has been changed is now all of, all action items and all agenda comments have been placed together in one period. It's been moved to the beginning of the meeting. So have that three minute timeframe, but it's been limited to 10 speakers per meet. The idea was that what has happened is the agenda comes out on a Thursday. We spend that Thursday, Friday, the weekend digesting what's on the agenda, determining how we're going to vote. We come in and maybe a few minutes before we're going to actually vote is really the only time that folks have the opportunity to come speak to us face to face. And it's really a three minute, one way conversation. So. That was, it was never an effective means of allowing the public in a face to face manner to really influence our decision making. So moving into the beginning is a little more time. We still have ample of opportunities for folks to communicate with us. So if we have, we still have that public comment. If you arrive at the board meeting, you can still write your comment on the card. Put it in the box behind at the door. You can hop online and you can leave a public comment there. Send us phone calls, emails at any point in time, not just during a meeting or when an agenda is out or any topic. I received a bunch of emails today about opportunities. So. That change was made for a few reasons. I have no doubt that I could say as much as I want to about it, there are some people who are going to have their opinion. That's, that's okay. We all have opinions on things. I will say that while we did hear, I believe I took note, it was 12 speakers on public comment on Monday night, we also received emails. I had phone calls. I had conversations with folks who agreed with the change. So. There are a number of factors that go into play there on, on why you vote a certain way. It's not always just, hey, the person in front of me is saying this. Yeah, I've got other folks there too. And I'm going to stop you. I'm not.
And Suzette, Suzette, do you want to?
Yeah. So there were a lot of factors that went into my final decision to vote for the change. There had been a lot of amendments made that decreased the, the stringency of it, that kind of opened it up for more flexibility. One of them being that you could, it didn't have to pre-register. It just said register in advance. There was a last minute change to that, but hopefully the, the spirit of that is that people will just have to say what they want to comment on because it should be tied to an agenda item. Another thing that, that opened up was the restriction on speaking at multiple meetings in a row was dropped for people speaking to action items. And so there is still a lane for people to come before us and speak if it's something that we're voting on. The time constraint, I think, was, was brought up a couple of times by people, but then the data kind of showed that 30 minutes has typically been plenty. And we did say, and I, and I plan to, you know, hold us as a board accountable for this. If there is a lot of interest in a certain subject, public comment at the regular meeting is probably not the way to handle that. It is not the way to address that issue. So if something comes up that the public really needs to discuss, it shouldn't be one person at a time talking to us for three minutes when we can't ask a question, we can't react, we can't follow up with them. So that would be an instance where we need to have a world cafe. We need to have a town hall. We need to have another, another, another avenue for people to interact with us. I'm willing to try a lot of those different things. I know President Seaman is willing to try different things. We, we know that the public wants us to be available. And I would ask that, you know, please give us a chance to be, to be available. I think, I think we mean it and I think we're going to try to do it.
Oh, thank you very much for that response and that information. I'll go on.
Can I say also, I sent out a survey on my personal Facebook page about the public comment policy. And I neglected to mention this during the meeting too. A lot of the comments I got were that people did not have a problem with X, Y, and Z. What they didn't like was the two, the two on, one off. And that did get changed. So, you know, like David said, you know, the people that showed up at that meeting were against certain parts of it, but people that didn't have a problem with it didn't necessarily leave their homes and come and sit through a three hour, you know, the first three and a half hours of that meeting to be able to say, I don't have a problem with this. So there were comments that were positive that were not, you know, recorded.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Go to another question on chat. Very different. The Missouri Legislature is currently in special session. The governor has asked that tax cuts be considered during this session because we have a surplus of dollars right now in the state. Do you both, do both of you feel as though the school districts, specifically Columbia Public Schools, have been provided with more than adequate funds to attend to the mental health and knowledge gaps issue, issues that we are facing coming out of the pandemic? Long question. Hopefully you got the gist of it. Who would like to take that first?
I don't mind starting. I have some thoughts about this. Well, so the funds that we got because of COVID, you know, the ARPA funds and the SIR funds, those are distributed through the state, but those are federal funds. And we did get, you know, more than $23 million in this later round, latest round of SIR three funds. We are using that to catch up from the pandemic. We're partnering with a lot of community organizations for tutoring and after school care and school on days off and those kinds of things. And that is totally different than the regular money we get from the state for students. There's a, there's a number called the state adequacy target. And it's the money that the state has decided each student is allotted per year for, in exchange for us providing an education for them. And that number has barely changed in decades. So we are, you know, we get 6,300 ish per student to educate them. And we all know that the cost of everything has gone up quite a bit and we are still getting that same amount per student from the state. And so I, I would like to see that state adequacy target move up.
Thank you. And Mr. Seaman.
All right, I'm going to ask you to repeat your question. If you would.
But yeah, I'll go to the essence. The governor has asked that tax cut, cuts be considered during this session because of the surplus of dollars right now in the state. Do both of you feel as though the school districts, specifically the Columbia Public Schools, have been provided with more than adequate funds to attend to the mental health and knowledge gap issues that we are facing after coming out of the pandemic?
Now, I'll always advocate that to use more state funding for this, not anything. We, we don't have the state funding at the moment to even cover the transportation costs that the state is required to provide. So. I understand folks with tax cuts, folks see a surplus in state funding, but I, you're, you're never going to catch me saying, yes, please withhold some more funding for our schools. So, yeah, I'll take, we'll take it.
Right. And I don't know if any, any of either of you know specifically, but where does Missouri rank in the amount of support? State support that they give to schools compared to other states? Usually there's a ranking list. I don't, I'm not sure. I just was wondering if either of you knew.
I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I think the last number I saw was maybe the bottom half of the 40s.
Yeah.
But I also don't want to slander our state with false information.
Right. Yeah, we can research that. I was just curious. Okay, to go on to another question. What are the realistic chances to create SEPAC for special education parents to collaborate with the district more and more appropriately, I think they, they say? Who wants to?
I'll take it. I actually discussed that with a parent this morning during my open office hours. So it's a special education parent advisory committee is, is the idea that's being floated. That would be an advisory committee needs to be approved by the board president and those meetings need to be public also. So the meetings would need to be published. They would need to be public. And there are, there are some factors to consider. I'm going to look into the information that was presented to me. I know we have a lot of special education parents who feel like they, they have not had an open avenue into discussing their concerns with either the district or the board. I'm happy to listen to what they have to say and look more into it. This parent is going to get back with me with some, with some additional information from school boards in the state who do have these CPACs. And we'll see, we'll see. I'm a big fan of just facilitating getting the people in the room that need to talk to each other and, and figure it out. And we're all humans. We're all parents and we, we, you know, we have to believe that all of us want what is best for our kids. So. I think, you know, if we approach it, if we approach any situation that way, we'll be able to move forward a little bit.
Thank you. And Mr. Seaman.
Yeah. So this, as Suzette said, this is a concept. The concept of CPAC has been floated around even back when I was running in 2020. I will tell you that as Suzette said, president is the person who is able to establish that. One of the reasons that I saw the presidency for the school board was that reason. I firmly believe in effective communication. I think that is a means of effective communication. And I am more than willing to listen and as Suzette said, take on all the, the information and data we comply so that we can necessarily establish a CPAC. I think there is secondary, and I don't want to call it a consequence because it's not a consequence. But I guess the secondary consequences there, we end up, if we are able to establish a CPAC, it is effective. We then do have other groups in this community will come forward and say, we would like one as well. Like I said, that's not really a consequence. I don't have another word to use. It's, I guess more, it's actually more of an opportunity. We are able to establish a CPAC in other communities within the district, say, that's effective. I want that as well. Does it ensure that we have, maybe you have to hire more staff to manage those or a couple more man hours to ensure that that happens? Yes, but like I said, we, we are in the business of wanting effective communication. I do think that's a great start.
Thanks. Going on to another question, says education has been deemed our greatest democracy. Who do you think are the primary customers for the board, for the schools, for teachers? What are the roles of us, of students in the customer system? I haven't heard of that customer system, but I think customers, does that make, question make sense to, to you?
Yeah. Suzette, if you don't mind, I'll take this first. Okay. So. I think that's a part of a school board member's philosophy is exactly who do I serve first? There are always competing groups there with students, staff, parents or, or outside groups. So in my mind, it's always students are first. How we serve. So. They are our customers. Students are going to be in those rooms eight, nine, and sometimes 10 hours a day if they're playing out sports or or involved in extracurricular activities. I do think that students' responsibility and that is a kind of a strange way of putting it, a customer, but the student's responsibility at school is to ensure that they are, they're coming in prepared, that they are able to absorb the information that their, that their, that our staff is providing them. I think it really ends there. You want to, we want to produce those productive members of society. So students' responsibility is to absorb all that information so that they can be productive in society. It's our job. It's our staff's job. It's parents' job. Again, I'm a parent of three CPS students to ensure that we're providing our students with those resources so they can go out and be productive members of society. So. That wasn't a high kind of question there with the, with the customer part, but yeah. I hope that the beginning there was a good enough answer. Our number one customer is students.
And Suzette Waters, do you want to add some to that?
No, just, I agree. It's all about the students. I would say, I mean, the expectation on the student should be that they show up and that they, they try, you know, they, somebody else needs to believe in them, but they also need to believe that, you know, they need to try and do what they can to achieve what they can. But if they just show up, then it's on us as a district to develop what it is that's in them that will make them succeed.
And a follow up question to that is, is, is there a method or a means for students to provide feedback to what they're getting and what they need and maybe how to improve things? Is there a feedback system, a formal feedback system from, from the students to the teachers in the school and the administration? But that's just something that popped into my head, the question.
No, I was going to say, I'm not sure if there's a formal system. I'm trying to remember back to when I was at Rockbridge and I feel like there were end of semester surveys and those type of things. What a formalized system that students can give back. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I know certain schools have done like what they call a climate survey, just to kind of ask students, you know, do you feel welcome here? Do you feel safe here? Do you feel? Do you feel safe here? Do you feel supported? You know, I like my teachers, one through five, you know, that, those kinds of things. I don't know that it's district-wide and I don't know what is done with that information other than it going to the administrators of that building. I think, I love a survey. So I've, you know, I think any, any feedback from students or teachers would be wonderful.
Great. Thank you. Good thing to think about. Going on to another question. It says, the nature school has not been removed. Several nature playscapes that were unsafe and inaccessible have been removed. The nature school is still happening. Outdoor classrooms are still in place and place-based and nature learning is still happening. Do you have anything to comment about the nature school? We did have a program this last year about the nature school.
Do you mind if I take this one, David? So the nature school is something that's extremely important to me. I'm, I'm, I'm emotionally attached to it. I'm passionate about it. It is moving forward. We just voted to approve the bid for construction and that will start sooner, you know, as soon as we can. I mean, I'm, I'm ready to go out there and start digging a hole myself. But it is going to happen. We owe a lot of gratitude to the Missouri Department of Conservation for partnering with us on that and to a lot of community partners for donating almost $2 million at this point. And it'll probably still keep coming in from corporations to individuals to get that done. And it's going to be a marvelous opportunity for our students and cannot wait for it to open.
Mr. Seaman, would you like to add anything to, to that?
I, I think Suzette covered it very well. I do know that she is incredibly passionate about the, the nature school. I think we all are. I will say, I think I've seen, we have seen a few comments about some of the, the nature playgrounds at different schools being removed. Those are really just to ensure that they are safe for our students. We want to make sure that there's no, yeah, we just want to make sure that those are safe for our students. So that's why you may see some of those being moved. Yeah. I do want to say that I, I am, I am currently at work and I do have a meeting at one o'clock that I'm, I might, I'm going to hop off.
Okay.
But I do appreciate the time. I do see some questions here in the chat. I know a lot of those folks, so I can, I can reach out to you.
Can, I think we have a few more minutes. Yeah. My, the battery ran out on my kitchen clock, so I'm not sure exactly what time it is.
It's 12:55. I can stay, I can stay until like five after, if that's helpful, David.
Yeah. And maybe we can get at least this one more question. I answered about Worley Street Roundtable facilitates monthly community meetings. We had several young people in attendance. The need for trauma, mental health support is at a all-time high. The youth did not feel that there were any in building mental health trauma support, I assume, in the schools. They informed us that school counselors only address scheduled credit, credit academic issues. Can you clear, please share with us what is really available to our students in this critical area?
Yeah, we actually, I feel like we've done, we've made a concerted effort to address that in a lot of ways. We partner with FACE. We partner with Borough Behavioral Health. There are at least two full-time counselors at Battle High School right now trying to help that school address the mental health needs of students. We have homeschool communicators. We have outreach counselors. We have trauma counselors. We, we have SRR funds going to other community organizations to help address some of those mental health needs. So we know, we know it's a problem and we've tried to identify the buildings at which it is the most prevalent or a more prevalent problem and divert resources there. But every building has at least a homeschool communicator or a counselor. And school counselors, you're, that, that person is right. School counselors are not necessarily trained as like psychologists or, or mental health therapists. But every school does have some mental health resources and, and we're getting more in there as we are able and developing more partnerships to address those needs.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. David, if you have to go, and we'll continue with a few more questions with Suzette, but thank you so much for sharing your time and, and for being on the school board and working and all the efforts that both of you put in. But we'll let you go if you have to go to another meeting. Thank you so much. And we'll continue with Suzette Waters.
You provided me.
Thanks. So to follow up on a question, there's, there's reference to the Grow Your Own Teachers of Color Program. Is Suzette still here? Yeah. There is the Grow Your Own Teachers of Color Program. Assistant former superintendent, Dr. Stiepleman is developing and launching this initiative. Our community conversation at Worley Street Roundtable is now asking for a Grow Your, Our Own School Counselors Program. Do you know anything about this? And do you have any thoughts on this?
I didn't know that. I know the Grow Our Own Initiative has been really successful. Nicola Dyer runs the Come Up Ed program and we just graduated three students this past May that have a full ride scholarship to go to local schools and become teachers and then come back and work at CPS. And they get funding for housing and they get, they get grants for, or money for, you know, everything they would need to outfit their dorm room. So it's, it's really a wonderful program. And they start accepting students to do student, summer school teaching, you know, when they're in high school. So they get a lot of experience. I don't know about the counselors. So that, that's a new one to me, but I think that's great. Way to go, Worley Street Roundtable.
And let's see, I have a question wanting to know as well, oh, the school board's plans to have summer school board meetings recorded and broadcast. I guess there was a comment about whether the summer months board meetings are recorded or not and whether they can be.
Well, since David's not here, I'll take this one. I know, I, how, how to say? I, I, I think I'm just going to have to say what I think because I don't, I don't know how to do it any other way. I think that was a misstep not to record those meetings. David knows this. Typically, the summer meetings have not been broadcast because first of all, we didn't used to have summer meetings. But then the bills weren't getting paid. There were like little housekeeping things that weren't getting done over the summer. So we added in the, the July and August meetings so that those business things could still happen over the summer months, but those weren't broadcast because they were typically supposed to, you know, they're supposed to be 15-minute meetings. But then when you determine that at your summer meeting, you're going to talk about a public engagement policy change and then not record that, not allow public comment at that meeting, I think was a missed opportunity. Well, I, I think it got us off on, on the wrong foot with the public when it came to that policy. I'm speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for the rest of the board in that situation. That is how I felt about it as a board member. And I think if we are going to discuss regular business-type things during our summer meetings, then we do need to record them. I'm, I'm kind of a fan and I'll go on record as saying like, I, I don't have a problem with most of our meetings being recorded. I think, you know, I think the more, the better with, you know, if we don't have anything to hide and we are, and we say it's important to us to be transparent, then, then yeah, let's record everything. I mean, you're recording this right now and I'm saying all of it. So I, I think there is a difference of opinion on, with some people about what should and should not be recorded for different reasons. And I will have to be respectful of those other opinions and we'll see how it shakes out. But I think because of the temperature of the community that we have going right now, we as a board need to be extremely sensitive to being available, to being transparent, to responding, to being responsive and to being accountable for the decisions that we make. And I'm going to try my hardest to do that. I know I'm going to do things that upset people. I know I'm going to make decisions that people don't agree with, but I'm going to tell the truth about it. And if it turns out I think I've done something wrong, I'll say I was wrong. And, you know, I'm sure people will point out to me that I've done something wrong. But so, you know, the original question there, I kind of got off on a tangent, but the original question was about recording meetings. I think anytime we're, we're doing more than just housekeeping, then yes, it should be recorded.
Thank you. I think we'll end there. And if anyone didn't get a question asked, I would encourage you to send it directly to the school board members, but also you can send it to the League of Women Voters and we'll send it to the school board members and get an answer and get back to you. I just want to thank you also, Suzette Waters, for joining us and echo what someone put in the chat that thank you for your candid and sincere answers and to engage with the public. So thank you so, and thank you also for your work and effort on the school board because I know it's, it's a lot and takes a lot of your private time, but you're doing it with a lot of energy and interest. And I just wanted to let the viewers know, we're past one, that the next Lunch and Learn program is October 11th with Brianna Lennon, our Boone County clerk, and she will share with us what's so important, which is what you need to know and do to vote in the November 8th election. A lot has changed this year. So please tune in for Lunch and Learn, October 11th. And thank you, Lauren, again for hosting. So we'll see everyone. Oh, and the deadline for registering to vote is October 12th. Please share that with anyone who needs to register. Thank you.
Will you send me a transcript of the chat, please?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay. Thanks. And then I'll turn it back with anyone that I missed.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.